This conference will now be recorded.
I'm gonna call this meeting of the Council, Johnstown Village Council to order Tuesday, January 19th at 6:33 PM. Roll call, Teresa.
Mayor Chip Dutter. Cheryl Robertson.
Here.
Doug Lainer.
Here.
Marvin Block. Ben Lee.
Here.
Sharon Hendren. Carol Van Deest.
Here.
All accounted for. Sharon, would you like to lead us?
Yes. Let's have a moment of silence, first of all, for Brandon Stalker. He was a patrolman, was policeman that was killed in Toledo. Amen. Father in heaven, we the people in the land of the free and home of the brave desperately need you. We beg for your guidance and wisdom for our leaders. May your plan be the desire of the nation. We ask in your name. Amen.
Blood allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Okay. First up is actions on minutes for the meeting that was held on January 5th. Any additions, corrections?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Doug Lainer seconds. Teresa, we call roll.
Mayor Dutter.
Yes.
Cheryl Robertson.
Yes.
Doug Lainer.
Yes.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Ben Lee.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren. Carol Van Deest.
Yes.
Okay. Next up is citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. I'm gonna open it up to anybody who's here who wants to have their three minutes. Former Councilman Louie Main.
Former.
I said former council.
I've gone over this with Councilman Lee, but an item came before the planning commission their last meeting, and that was a variance on sidewalk. And it was interesting, in the application, the ordinance that they were giving a variance to simply said ordinance or sidewalk ordinance. Okay, so what is a sidewalk ordinance? I had to look at that. So Jim, if you want to call up chapter 901, please. I thought you had.
Okay.
And 901, 01A. And the first statement there is any person desiring to install or construct a public sidewalk. Other requirement is an option. Now, chapter nine is not under the Planning and Zoning Commission. So there is a little issue there as the planning commission issuing a variance on a chapter that is not part of the zoning code. And to go one step further. Chapter 1133 deals with variances. 113301. And it says, in accordance with revised Code 713.11, the Planning and Zoning Commission may appropriate cases and subject to appropriate conditions and safeguards authorize such variance from the terms of the zoning ordinance. So not chapter nine, but of chapter 11. Now let's go back to chapter 1103, variances and approval. 110301. The last part of that, variances are subject to approval by council, not the planning commission. So there are three ordinances there that would have dealt with that approval of that variance at the last meeting. It appears that, you know, planning commission and the council needs to review, make some corrections there. And in chapter 901, the cost of a application for a sidewalk is $25. To me, why in the heck would you charge 340 some dollars for a variance to an ordinance that the commission had no authority yet? Now that's an ordinance requirement, not a resolution. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Louie. That's worth looking into.
I'm glad we're recording this because I'll have to go back and figure it out.
We need to have a Yaz review at least.
Yeah, I just want to take a look at it. I appreciate Louie bringing it up.
We're glad you brought it up. Thank you. I listened to most of that Zoom call for the planning board. That part I didn't listen to. I'm in the dark too, so I'll have to.
Sounds to me like the verbiage needs cleaned up.
Use your mic.
Verbiage needs cleaned up on it all.
I'm just, I'm gonna call it out. We really can't hear anybody.
Ben can't hear because you're not at the microphone, Louie. So we got people at home that can't hear because you're not at a mic. Louie's done, Ben.
Anyhow, it needs looked at. So well, thank you for bringing it up. Anybody else? Anybody who's joined us by Zoom went to weigh in. Hearing none, I'm gonna close the citizen comment portion, and we'll move on to council committee reports. First up is planning and zoning. It met on the 12th of January. Next meeting is the 25th of January. And I don't know who wants to, who wants to take this? Bailey or Ben?
I'll just give a quick rundown. I think by now you can imagine we entertained a variance on sidewalks. That's one item that we talked about. And that had to do with sidewalks going down Edwards Road for tech developing that property over there. For a couple of those homeowners, it was, in the manner in which it was entertained and discussed, it was ultimately approved through that venue. But it sounds like there'll be some additional conversation based off of Louie's call out tonight. We also talked through two zoning map amendment changes that were ultimately approved, two parcels on West Koshakton next to Johnstown Point and moving those into the village commercial, I believe, category. And then two adjoining properties there at the point between Koshakton and Sportsman's Club, and changing those from light manufacturing to GCC2. And those were ultimately approved as well, given the state of facts that were discussed at that point. Had some additional conversation about a, an item on Jim Blair's report relative to some work being done, performed at a property at Westview and Koshakton that is going, it sounds like it'll continue into the planning and zoning discussion next week as well, but nothing formalized. It was really just the conversation that came out of the public comment section of that planning and zoning meeting. Nothing actionable from a council standpoint or to expect from planning and zoning to council at this point. Other than that, I think that was pretty much it, besides setting goals for 2021 as well.
Ben, you said those zoning map amendments were approved?
Correct.
So Bailey, we need that legislation to get to council then at the next meeting because they ultimately have to approve it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Senator Bailey about safety and service?
The agenda has the date of the 25th. I just want to make sure that that meeting is actually the 26th.
It is the 26th. Thank you.
Oops. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to safety and service. They met on January 5th. Next meeting is February 2nd. And I don't think we, did we talk about safety and service? No.
We talked about it already this month. We're good.
We did it the last one. Okay, that's done. Sorry. And finance committee met tonight. And you want to lead us through that?
Yeah, long agenda tonight, but a lot of good information. We talked about, we aligned on the couple of goals that we have, very narrow and focused for 2021. Went over regular Dana's report, bank to book reconciliation and everything like that that she'll present tonight. Very favorable, great information. Continue to just call out the fact that the village is in a very good financial situation and very proud about the work that has been done to get us to that point. The carryover numbers actualized much favorably in a lot of areas, much more favorably in a lot of areas than what we were working under assumption wise when putting the budget together last year. And so that lends a lot of comfort in knowing that either our contingency bucket expands and puts us in a better position for any additional liabilities that may come down the line, or it gives us the ability to exercise on some of these contingency plans from a capital improvement project standpoint going forward here. Hopefully being able to look at that seriously in Q1. A lot of these items are contingent upon the OPWC applications and the paving projects that the village has planned. But we went through the park and rec list at the moment. The trailhead parking lot, dog park, pedestrian counter. One action item from tonight is Chief is going to be purchasing a new desktop computer for mayor's court. Money's there. It's not an issue. Didn't realize that it was a need when we were putting the budget together last year. So Chief is going to be reaching out on that. Talked about other items within service, safety and service, leafy Dell sidewalk down Stonehedge Row. Capacity fee, that'll be an item that we have come forward to council in two weeks. Essentially, the engineering report that Jack provided at the end of last year, we reviewed in finance and we agreed with that finding three to oh, three to zero, to move that item forward for council consideration based off of the numbers that were presented by the engineer. In tandem, what will come with that is probably an ordinance outlining policy around how to accept or if we accept prepayments for capacity connections. And if we do accept the sunset provisions associated with that. So how long we would honor or have or hold those prepayments in this overlapping time period between when the old capacity fees are stopping and the new capacity fees are coming on board. A lot of that relevancy has to the connections that we're expecting down Croton Road and the other waterline extensions, as well as the continued home building that's happening within the village. Items that weren't necessarily on top of mind in 2015 when this was reviewed before. So probably looking to clarify something there. Other than that, Jim had a couple of updates about state controlling board hearing, Project Mastodon information on February 24th. The $3 million application for the loan for the water tower was submitted today. And then briefly discussed the local government fund formula and continuing to kind of push that conversation about our desire to update that formula because of how outdated it is and how much better of a position it would put the village with the growth that we're expecting. But obviously, understanding the realistic aspect of the situation that it's not going to be an easy conversation to have. So that was it. A lot done in 90 minutes. So I don't think I missed anything, did I?
No. Any questions for Ben? Okay, moving right along. Economic development met on January 7th. The minutes are attached to the agenda. The economic development will next meet on February the 4th. And Cheryl?
Okay, yeah. Couple of updates. At our last meeting, we made our goal list for 2021. And one of the goals was, was to develop a business census of our local businesses. And Jim has developed a form for those of us on our economic committee to look at and to double check. And if we could do that and get back to him by the 22nd of this month, he would appreciate it. And thanks, Jim, for jumping on this right away. We appreciate it. And we will get back to you after we had a chance to take a closer look. One of the other areas on of one of the other goals was to help facilitate a meeting for the formation of a chamber of commerce. Obviously, this is something that the Johnstown business people would have to do, but we could at least facilitate a meeting, put a meeting together, help them get some information. But I think this is something that Johnstown needs. There's a very active one in Pataskla. And I'm sure there's lessons that can be learned from Pataskla. And I think that would be helpful for everyone involved. Little bit of bad news. Project Circuit, they have decided to pull out of their conversations with us concerning the location to the enterprise center. So somewhat disappointing, but it always has to be a fit for each party involved. So, and that is really the updates I have. Jim, do you have anything else that has happened in the last two weeks?
I'll give you some information, the last two, three hours. Project Circuit maybe coming back around. I think they went shopping and maybe didn't find what they wanted. So I, I don't know what's gonna happen, but supposedly Johnstown is back at least on the table. I haven't had that officially rendered to me. I will vet that source and figure out what's going on and follow back up with the economic development committee. That was this afternoon.
It's always fresh in this business. All right, thanks.
That's all I have.
Any questions? Comments? Marvin?
Can't hear him.
You can bring it closer to you.
You really gotta put it close.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The realtor told me the other day that they'd been running around. What happened was there, not that it was merging with that other group, and actually Thayer sold out that group to buy the building. And Thayer's operating on their own, but they don't have any control over the building. And they went down and tried to negotiate with that and a couple of other places. And they're finding out that they don't have the weather all. And I told them if they wanted to talk to us again, they better talk to Jim Leonard first. See what we had going on. And I that was about the end of the conversation. I told them I wasn't too happy with them.
We're always willing to listen.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to say, I think that the Chamber of Commerce is a great idea. I'd love to see that continue to go forward and to create that link. So I'm very happy economic development is looking at that. I think that's, that's great.
Okay. Next up, park and rec met on the 14th of January. Next meets on February 11th. And Carol?
So Bailey told us that she had submitted the TAP grant for Raccoon Creek, for a Raccoon Creek Park, for a trail. And that's supposed, that's gotta be submitted by the end of the month. And she said she'd take care of that. And she also reviewed a state program called Walk Bike Ohio. And that's being sponsored by ODOT. And so we got a little knowledge about that. And then we reviewed and approved our park and rec 2021 goals. And that was, I don't know. I think that's it.
Now, those, that's what I remember.
Okay.
Any other, any questions for Carol?
Yeah, Carol, did we, all those goals and things, all those accomplishments that we got on there, did you find any monetary values to put on those?
I submitted the timeline for the Trailhead Park to Bailey and Jim Leonard. And they were going to, as a staff, come up with numbers because they said they'd, they'd be, best be the ones to have that kind of information. So that's something we can go over at the next meeting.
Don't, don't forget that any, any work that our staff done is considered in kind service. It's recognized. I think it'd be a big help if you talk to the Babcock Foundation or Sarah Wallace, show her those figures of what we've once been accomplished with the help that they've given us.
Well, and, and we do, we do say Village of Johnstown whenever they were participating in some of the projects down there. And the reason I worked on a timeline for the park district is because Jim Blair suggested it. And, and so, you know, it really does give a good account of what we've done, starting in 1880 when the actual railroad came through, up through 2020. So hopefully, it can be something that can be used if we go to the Evans Foundation, Marvin, or any, any other group.
I remember all those things happening, Carol, but I was amazed at what it looked like on paper.
Yeah, it does kind of, yeah. So we'll see what all we've spent down there. A lot of cases, it wasn't us spending money. It was like the Evans Foundation paid, I think around, I don't really remember, $47,000 maybe. I'm not sure. But the staff will come up with the numbers to show us what all's been done down there. We have most confidence in them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Question, comments? Okay, we'll move right along. Next up is director reports. And Dana is first up.
Yes. So we have year end for 2020. We've ended the year with just about 96%, just under 96% of our income tax collections from the budget. So due to COVID, we expected initially a lot more of a shortfall than that. So that's good news. Our withholding taxes continue to grow every year. Our individual collections are down slightly and as well as our net profits. And I have my typical notes on revenue and expenses. We've, let's see, just go over some of the highlighted things here. We have received proceeds for 80 new homes that were permitted throughout the village in 2020. We've bonded several projects that we are currently working on. We've received $108,000 in total from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation for rebates throughout the year, which also helped our general fund. And some other items that, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to go through them. But I feel like I go through this, the same, the same numbers and the same comments, month to month. So I don't want to be redundant, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. Income tax revenue is shown. Jim has a graph up here, how we, how we have grown since 2016. And every year, except for this year, because of COVID, we've seen an increase in total collection. So that's very good. That, that shows that we're growing economically. Lots of people are moving into Johnstown businesses as well. And I think pay rates are going up, which attributes to the withholding taxes that are being, that are coming in. So lots of good things happening here. Are there any questions?
Questions for Dana? If not, thank you, Dana.
I just wanted to put out there real quick, a tremendous amount of appreciation for Dana with respect to the budget and the reporting. Every budget, we say, you know, it gets, it gets better and it gets easier, and it does. But I think the other piece is it gets more complicated and everything that we do gets more complicated. And just a fantastic job with keeping everything together, keeping the details straight, the questions aligned, and then involving how we present the information and just helping us get to the end result. So just wanted to throw out a lot of appreciation to Dana and what she does.
Thank you.
It's kind of under finance. Can you hear me? Kind of under the financing. I just wanted to say that to do to the committee that took care of the federal funding that we got and the way they disturbed, distributed that money and the way it was used. I don't see how anybody could have done a very, any better job. And I'm very proud of all of you. You took in so many different organizations and things, and it wasn't all given to one entity. It was really spread out. And I think the town's very happy with you too.
Hopefully they'll give us some more and we can spread that around too. Chief, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, the council, members of the public. So the big thing for me is CAD is up and running. There has been some significant hurdles that we are currently overcoming. I'm very happy with it. And at times I am beating my head on a desk and the manager can attest that I'm rolling both my sleeves up and getting it dirty. I think it was last week you walked around the corner and see me covered in drywall dust, you know, as I'm running cables through the building. So, but thus far, it's been great. There has been some network issues because they, they installed CAD and then they installed the new network and it's been very problematic with the firewalls and stuff. But I'm glad that the security's there. A network, it's working good. A network, it's working good. It seems like there's a problem with the five gigahertz spectrum. I know that doesn't mean anything to you, but right now it seems like the two point four gigahertz spectrum is, is pretty stable for us and IT seems to think that it's a MAC issue, but I'm finding that it seems to be like all my devices throughout the entire building. Digital storage is up and working. I'm excited about that because I'm at a area now where I'm no longer printing physical photographs for case files and stuff like that. And I think that that, in the long run, is going to be a tremendous saving. As a matter of fact, the only time that we have to print those is if the case goes to court, being that the magistrate or judge wants to see it. And then I've changed the way that we're printing those. Instead of printing a single page for a single photo, there's four photos on a page, which is saving us approximately twenty seven cents, but those will add up. Right, Dana?
Sure will.
Absolutely.
Great.
The training for the officers has been fantastic for the month of November and December. They have received training in ethics and law enforcement, community-based policing strategies, anti-bias training for law enforcement and evidence collection. So very productive month there. This month, we are doing Below One Hundred, which is a course to get officers to slow down. If they're doing a hundred miles per hour in the village, they're gonna have a significant issue with me. So there's just, they better not be going that fast.
Me, too.
But it is training to, to make officers aware of their surroundings, to watch speed. I think it's more geared towards like deputy sheriff, stuff like that, where they're able to run wide open in certain areas. The fleet itself's been doing pretty good. I was kind of surprised that the car number four, which is a, it's a twenty Ford, it needs new tires, which absolutely kind of blew my mind because I think the car is only eleven months old. And I think it only has fourteen thousand miles on it, and it already wants tire replacement. So I actually took a second mechanic to, to say, hey, is, is this true? And the second mechanic said, yeah, it absolutely is. And I said, why, why is that? Because I can't wrap my head around it. And they said, it's because, it's not because the police vehicles are being driven hard, it's because they break more than what an average car does, and they seem to do a significant amount of cornering. And that's very consistent with what they do in the community. They, they turn a corner, turn a corner, turn a corner, turn a corner all day long for sixteen hours. And that's what's causing the wear on those tires. So at least I felt better about it. Gas cost, if you notice, there was a dip during COVID where those gasoline prices fell. It stayed relatively consistent for this year. I did get the November amount just after I posted this, and November was
November's on here.
November's on.
It's in your report. I'm sorry, December. And December is nine hundred and twenty eight dollars. So just a little bit under November. I did several of the speed studies. I did look at Concord Crossing. So I was very happy with that and and Mr. Manager, if you just roll down just a little bit, you can see in that particular subdivision that there's the graph there and the spike is exactly what I want to see. Right in the middle, that band, everybody's doing a little bit underneath the speed limit. It goes straight up, pretty much comes straight down. So that tells me that that neighborhood's doing a good job. The next one is going to be Koshockton. That one, you can see how it kind of tapers at the top. It means that there's a little bit more speeding, but it's not a significant amount of speeding problems there. That's gonna be right in front of where the new fire station's gonna go. And the next one is going to be Eagles Nest. And then Eagles Nest, same thing, not a big issue with speed. You can see that most of the cars are actually doing underneath the speed limit. But in no issues there. Equipment? The big thing there is, I really haven't done a lot with equipment. Purchased brooms where we could clean debris from traffic crashes. And we broke two handles, so we replaced those with wood. But it's just been small things on my end. It's nice to wrap up the, the year with calls of service. So there's the calls for service, and I think that the department did a good job. December, crime statistics. You can see there, if anybody has any questions towards the end, it's, I'd be more happy to answer questions there. Social media is, is pretty much consistent. Big thing on my end is going to be personnel. So there has, there was two retirements, and I was very pleased to, to see that they made it to retirement. I was very thankful for their years of service. So Don Roach, dispatcher, retired from the Johnstown Police Department, and Lieutenant Josh Budnot, after thirty some years of service, retired from the Johnstown Police Department. And they, I really thank them for them, sir, excuse me, thank them for their service to the community. The dispatcher Roach was replaced with dispatcher Amy Manken, so we welcome her to the village. And currently, we are, we have six officers that are in background, and then two to three were actually taking close consideration of those candidates. At the end of this, I do have some CAD samples. So one nice thing about CAD is that there's a mapping on the CAD. And from basically any of the supervisors' workstations, including mine and the deputy chief, oh, sorry, before I, well, actually, after I get into this, you can see at any time in real time where cars are located in the village, which is a very neat thing. And in addition to that, when calls pop up for service, they'll actually pop up on the map, too, so you can see how far the car is away from the actual call from service. So it's a really neat function that they have. In addition to that, the, the amount of data that we're able to pull from it is amazing, although we're still working towards getting some of the data done. So if a member of the council or a member of the community was to come to me and say, chief, how much time do you spend at your desk? And how much time do you spend doing business checks? And in the community, I can get realistic numbers that I can put in front of everybody to show, down to minutes, how much time I'm doing where. And that includes all the officers as well. The last thing, oh, you got a nice graph from me, too?
Got one for you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Now, I will say the January twenty one numbers are completely made up, but I just wanted to show visual representation of what will happen here over the next few months. But again, month over month, these are the numbers that are generated from the CAD system. So we'll be putting those again, just to compare our trends.
And then at the end of it, we, I have basically an example of what the current, of the new CAD reporting is going to look like as far as I present the number to council. And also what a log would look like. So at any given day, I can, I can log in and determine exactly what's happened in eight hours or one shift, an entire day, and it gives me a complete rundown of, of what's happened within the village. In addition to that, everything's printed and inserted digitally, is saving a lot of time as far as the officers go. So this is an example of what a traffic crash used to look like. You can see that it is all handwritten. It's hand drawn. It literally took officers about an hour to an hour and a half to complete one of these reports, physically, manually filling everything in. And now with CAD, everything's digitally drawn in, everything's digitally inputted, and a lot of that stuff's already there. So it's saving a tremendous amount of time. It's making our reports look more professional. And it's automatically submitting these reports to the state, which is saving time from us faxing these, is what we've done in the past, is faxes over the state, and now they get digitally transferred over. And that is all that I have. If there's any questions from council or the public, I'd be more than happy to answer that.
Questions for the chief?
Not a question, just a comment. In respect to technology, thank you for moving us into the twenty first century.
You are welcome.
Twentieth century, first performance.
To make sure that you get a hard hat if you'll be banging your head against a wall. So I'd like to see a picture with you with the a drywall dust.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna be back up in the ceiling, I think, this Friday, so Jim, you can get your camera ready. I, I didn't realize that there's so many, so much drywall ahead of us right up here.
One thing I'll say, you know, with chief being, you know, here almost a year now, when we did that survey of the community where, you know, we were trying to get input, you know, it was really important through the survey, and I think from U seven that we had an active chief and late last night, chief and I were texting, which is sad, by the way. But we were texting and, and he's been on about fifteen calls in the last two weeks. So that CAD system is a documenting what all of our officers are doing, including the chief. And then I think we've accomplished what the community wanted and what you wanted in hiring and replacing our chief with an, an active member of the force in conjunction with everything else he's doing with technology, as Carol stated. So I do want to say thank you to chief and, and thank you for council for giving the direction in which we wanted to go.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, council.
One of the questions I was asked by the public was when did you put money in the budget to hire a chief?
Because he's been seen now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. They didn't realize we had one.
They didn't know. Yeah.
Well, we
I think, I think we'll just leave that.
It was.
And
Thank you, Mr. Block.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just two, two quick questions. Chief, East Koshockton Street numbers for the traffic study, was that, that was going out of town, I assume, yes?
I, I believe that that, those numbers were coming into town.
Into town. Okay. That would make sense.
And it was placed right there where tech was. So just a little bit east of where the, the new firehouse is gonna be.
Okay. And then the other call out in tracking the numbers, I'm, again, I like the numbers, I like the trends, I like following along with how we've been. And I'd say the biggest change to everybody who's talking about as well, and to your credit, are the training hours. A tremendous amount of time and effort involved in training topics, diversification of topics, and training hours as well for the officers. So just wanted to, to say, thank you very much for continuing to promote that and promoted heavily because we're at least fifty percent higher on our spend in training than we were last year. So I think that goes a long way. I just wanted to send you some appreciation for that. So thank you.
Thank you. And that, that thank you goes both ways for me, too, because I know that council had approved, I think it was eleven thousand dollars for the training budget for this year. And their officers are gonna receive some amazing training. They're very excited about it and, and know that the community benefits for that, from that amazing training. They truly do.
Great.
Mayor, I have a couple.
Sure.
Two things police-related, since we're on reports. I've met with Deputy Chief Smart and Chief Haroun about reorganization of their facility because of some security issues with both the intake process as well as privacy issues with people giving sensitive information. So we're gonna do some work in-house with Officer Balastrea. I think chief, tell me if I'm going wrong, but we're gonna be moving chief's office, the lobby, and with minimal costs, and also securing a dispatch office as well for, for multiple reasons, some of which not publicly able to discuss. But so we're gonna be doing that. And then on a non-police issue, but under reports, I mentioned this to Finance Committee earlier, I believe, early in the evening. The federal government allowed eighty hours of COVID sick time to employees, based on what we can find out through Dana's research and the way we've handled it up to this point is that eighty hours expired, I think, at the end of twenty twenty. However, I want council, or I'm asking council to, at least at this point, extend that to our employees that are currently or will be battling COVID. Because it almost comes down to, well, you should have got COVID earlier, you know, if, if we don't give this to the rest of the employees. You know, I say that facetiously, but you know, I would ask that council, I guess, authorize or concur that we will extend that eighty hours at a one-time, you know, one-time issue to all employees that currently have not been infected with the virus. So
Same standards that they had before Jim, right?
But it's not federally authorized.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I just don't think it's fair.
I believe they didn't extend it, but there's gonna be another COVID bill coming from the Biden administration tomorrow or the next day soon. And I'm sure that'll be in there. Some, something dealing with that will be in there.
I, I just think it's fair. Right.
I think we should go ahead and, and do we need a motion?
No, if, if I don't hear any objections from council, that'll be our administration's ask, go forward with how we're gonna address it.
I would say also just so the staff knows that we are following the guidelines from twenty twenty. And if the guidelines do get extended or added to, then we'll revisit that at that point.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, for some reason, they give another eighty hours.
Sure.
You know, I burned up eighty, eighty hours of my COVID time, you know, then I would be, I don't know if I'd get sick again, but, but it does require the COVID documentation and all that stuff, so. Anything for you guys at home.
Fully supported. It's a good idea.
Thank you. We'll go forward with that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next up, legislation. I had heard from some council members that there was a possibility that there might be a motion on this table legislation.
Well, you need a motion to remove it from the table.
I so moved.
Been moved by Marvin, seconded by Sharon. You take ordinance thirty eight dash twenty twenty off the table. Teresa, you wanna call the role?
Cheryl Robertson.
Yes.
Doug Lehner.
Yes.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Ben Lee.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren. Carol Van Deest.
Yes.
Mayor Dutcher.
Yes. Okay, ordinance is now off the table. I'll open it to discussions. There any discussion on ordinance thirty eight dash twenty twenty?
What I understand, there are several different things in there. Some of it was contradictory. And I I'm getting appointed a bad guy again.
Keep talking to the mic, Marvin, please.
I said, here, I'm getting appointed a bad boy again, but if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion that we bring this up for a vote.
Motions have to be in the affirmative. So your motion would be to approve it?
Approve it.
And if you want to approve it, is a yes vote. If you want to discard it and
Start over.
Start over, it would be a no vote. Mr. Lee had a question?
Has there been a motion in a second already?
Yes.
I think you need to bring it up to the public, don't you? Public discussion.
Teresa, we had the motion in second.
That was to take it from the table.
We took it off the table, and then Marvin made a motion and Sharon seconded it again.
And you're, Marvin, just to clarify, your motion is to approve.
To approve it.
Yeah, but you have to vote yes or no.
Correct.
Right.
So it's first by Mar, a motion by Marvin and a second by Sharon. Do you get that, Ben?
Now we have to open up.
I'm gonna open up the public. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll close the public discussion. And we'll move to have a vote.
I'd like to make a comment before we vote, if that's okay.
All right. Go ahead.
I'm not a hundred percent sure why we're taking it off the table. In all honesty, because this is still an item that's being discussed within planning and zoning. There are several pieces with respect to accessory dwelling, accessory units in general, and things like that that would affect the outcome of this item specifically. If anything, I, I would request that the motions be withdrawn, if possible, and put back on the table to allow planning and zoning to continue deliberation of this item rather than voting it one way or the other tonight. I think in voting the affirmative would open us up for some unintended consequences, which is the point of the continued conversation in planning and zoning. And voting it down, I don't think would give a chance to fully consider the entire proposal for the ordinance in front of us with those changes having been vetted out through planning and zoning. Maybe the alternative is to send it back to planning and zoning with some comments from council, if there are objections to certain provisions. But I'm, I'm not in favor of voting for this tonight, though I will tender a yes or no vote. But just some consideration for further discussion within planning and zoning.
And that was my understanding, that it was still being studied. And so I was kind of surprised to see it on, on our agenda for tonight.
Well, it is, it's table legislation, so it'll remain on the agenda, Carol, until action is made. So
Okay.
If, if nothing happens tonight, you would see it month after month after month on the agenda as table legislation. So if if nothing happens tonight, you would see it month after month after month on the agenda as table legislation.
Thanks for that clarification, but I I do agree with Ben, uh that was my understanding that there was still discussion. It was still um being studied by zoning, um so I would. Like to see it tabled again, if that's how we can do it, and let them do their work.
When it come to us, it should have.
I you got, you all know how I feel about this, at this point in time, I think we're spending way too much time. On this, on worrying about accessory dwelling unit, when we have such bigger issues. To deal with with the village, we need to have our guidelines made into standards. I want everybody's time to be focused on that and not on this accessory dwelling unit, you guys have spent six months on this. That it's not getting us anywhere, w- we've got bigger fish to fry and that's my feeling, and so I just want, you know. We need to be done with this and move on. That's my feeling, Carol.
Let's just end it, I we.
And 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 if it's it's, you know, defeated. Uh there's nothing to preclude planning and zoning from. Writing another ordinance and considering it and bringing that to us, um there's nothing to stop that. Um but to just, this one has got some issues with some of the the language in it. And I think it'd be better just to to kill it off and send it back and have them, if they want to bring us another one, bring us another one. There, we're not, we're not opposed to it per se, but we would like to see something else other than this one. So I'm gonna vote no.
The two, if I could, the two, I have a response to Cheryl and Chip, if that's okay, but I don't want to interrupt anybody else wanting to speak.
Go ahead, Ben.
Um Sher- to Cheryl's point, absolutely understand uh the position you're coming from. I think the time that planning and zoning has spent on this is spent. And I think the additional the discussion around accessory units and some other definitions, lot coverage, you know, percentages and things like that. Um have validity independent of this ordinance. And will be entertained one way or the other, because I think there are some gaps within our current zoning code that will fix that. And I think that probably came up through conversation about accessory dwelling units. So from a planning and zoning perspective, the only additional time that would be spent. On accessory dwelling units would be if we were to have to take this back and bring it up within planning and zoning again. Uh because those items will be continued to be discussed independent. Um so the 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 efficient way would be to put it back on the table and have planning and zoning continue to discuss it, unless there's just. No, nobody wants to entertain it whatsoever, which if that's the case and that's the alternative, then the only thing that I would ask from a planning and zoning standpoint. Is it is for those on the majority ruling, if it does, uh if it is defeated tonight. That um if there's any specific feedback that could be passed along to planning and zoning. Uh next week, when there is an update given on this, then that will help continue to frame additional conversations around this. As well as potentially uh conversations around accessory dwelling units uh in general, so that's all.
Okay, anybody else? Will proceed to consider.
You, will you explain the vote again, Jim, please?
Yes, so motions are always in the affirmative, so to pass this. Legislation, vote yes, to defeat the legislation, vote no.
Or Ben requested a withdrawal of the motion, if you're interested in that, it would have to be made by Marvin.
And seconded by Sharon.
Hearing none, Theresa, you can call the roll.
The motion on the table is to approve ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty twenty. Doug Lainer.
No.
Marvin Block.
No.
Ben Lee.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna preface my vote with a comment, and that being. I would approve it under consideration of it being tabled with further conversation in planning and zoning, approving it tonight. With the gaps that we have in our current zone zoning code would not achieve the ends to what this was meant to do, so I'm voting no.
Before, we're in a vote.
I'm voting no because of that.
Noted, Sharon Hendren.
No.
Carol Van Deest.
Yes.
Mayor Dutcher.
No.
Carol Robertson.
No.
Ordinance failed.
The ordinance failed. Okay, moving on. We don't have any other legislation, see if which is the good news. Uh we don't have any introduction of legislation, which is even better news. Other business. Jim, do you have anything?
Oh, I'm sure I do, but um.
Nothing that we have to talk about.
Nothing we have to talk about.
Louis? Sure.
Uh Louis in the audience asked if, just for the record, if there was an update on the census, other than the director resigning. Uh Bailey, I don't know if you've had any confirmation with with that.
I think it was one one step in front of being fired, so.
I don't have an update on the census, no.
Been any articles I've been watching for him, trying to figure out when the when when the actual announcement will be that. The census is has been accepted and so stay tuned for further developments. They were having issues about who was being counted and who wasn't being counted, and I think when they figure that out, the new folks figure that out. Then they'll let us know, and until then, we'll have to just be a village for a while. Which is okay with me.
One of the one of the questions that I was asked.
Sure.
If we would be entered in uh. Doing our party when we get to make our announcement, doing it with maybe in conjunction with dedication of the new firehouse. Would be willing to share the festivities.
Do we know when the firehouse is scheduled to be?
We have a date?
Supposed to be finished, uh was supposed to be finished first of April, I think it turned off thirty days.
So I I don't have a problem with that, I also, I think Chip mentioned having the official flag unveiled at that time, so I guess I gotta get going on that project.
Well, originally, since we were paying for paying for the fireworks for the Fourth of July. My original thought was, gee, we should do that with in conjunction with the Fire Fourth of July and. Sort of wrap it all into one thing and and uh. See where we go, but if people want to do it earlier, but it it.
I think it, I I don't think they have a timeline, they can open, do the dedication later.
I just thought, you know.
So.
But but it all is so dependent upon COVID, um you know, we all thought. That Ironman's Festival would happen this year, who knows whether that's gonna happen. Uh Fourth of July, we thought that would be okay this year, who knows what's gonna happen by July. I mean, it's also up in the air, you know, we hope there's a Hartford Fair, but we gotta wait and see where COVID is, um. You know, everything is up in the air at this point, and you know, I just wish it was a different reality, but that's what the reality is.
So the the official by law. April first is when the Census Bureau is supposed to give the information to the state. They were also supposed to do uh. Population counts to the president by the thirty-first of twenty twenty twenty, so we all know where that stands, so. Uh I I don't know, probably June, July.
We're in unknown.
The Knott world is still on for the twenty.
Tomorrow.
As far as I know.
You're turning in your television, do it early, cause it will happen at noon. That is the one thing in this in this country that does happen on time, at twelve noon. Anybody else?
I do, it's very insignificant, but I hadn't heard about the Chamber of Commerce, which I guess there was one years ago, and I was not involved. Cause I didn't live in the village, but um uh some of these, I was thinking about, why don't we. Incorporate downtown Johnstown and call it Chamber of Commerce, because so many people in downtown Johnstown are. Like race spec and a lot of bankers, so. I I that's my thought, I don't know if you can do that, but I mean, make it one, call it one entity, I don't know. That's a thought.
Think we ought to start out and see if we can get the businesses downtown. Participate in it and start out with the new organization if they want to.
Yeah, and then.
I'm under the umbrella, but uh I haven't been active for a while downtown Johnstown.
And in our in our business community is more than just downtown.
Yeah.
It's the two enterprise centers, it's up and down sixty-two and thirty-seven, it's. A lot of individuals working out of their house. Um it's it's, I think we need to, the idea being to expand our horizon a little bit. And uh that's not to say that downtown Johnstown doesn't serve a useful purpose. Um but you know, I think I think we we're big enough for both.
You think so? I hope so, well, we have a meeting next month, I could bring it up, but you don't think it's good idea. We are big enough for both, but trying to get people out to organization, that's the tough.
I've actually gone to the Patascola one, and it's 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 amazing the number of people they get at, that they do a luncheon. It's, I don't know whether it's every month, but.
I bet you it is.
And it's a catered lunch and it it turns out a lot of people.
Does it?
Gotta have food.
And the food's good too, so the.
Charge up to the food and have an open bar.
No, no open bar, no drinking at the their noon meeting, anyhow, anybody else? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I think Ben's got.
Oh, Ben, you got something?
Sorry, two, just one quest- two questions really, is there any update, is the making the downtown dining uh more of a permanent? Situation at this point, or we continue to entertain to allow that, you know, downtown in the spring?
You mean the outdoor dining?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, downtown outdoor dining.
Uh yeah, uh refresh my memory, I've been, I don't know, or anybody. We extended it to October, that it has expired, um was our. Do we have to re-up our declaration of emergency, because I can only, okay?
Now, declaration of emergency you have is indefinite, it's subjective to your decision. But the outside dining, we were looking at maybe doing it Adora in that space. Um to allow, you know, outside consumption of alcohol, but the outside dining um in the downtown space, I think, was tied. More specifically to the state emergency declaration, but you had it expire in October, so. I didn't know if nice days during this during the winter here, which sometimes it gets up to sixty. If you just wanted to make it indefinite uh in extending it until a certain point in time or making it in conjunction with your village emergency ordinance.
Yeah, well, I'll I'll probably do it in conjunction with the village emergency, um I don't think Chief Runes had any complaints. Um so we did just limit it because we weren't sure how it was gonna work out, so. We'll get that uh uh done again this week as well.
Okay, I just want to put it out there, because I haven't heard any complaints, and I love seeing the people out town uh outside downtown, it just. It brings a different feel to that space, so I think it's great, the more permanent we can make it, I think the better it's gonna be.
Ba- Bailey's been following the Dora legislation, I don't know if there's an update, I I don't think it's gone anywhere.
From what I've seen, I don't think it has.
Yeah, I don't believe that it has, I've been keeping an eye on it though, because Adora is on my um internal goal list. So I will continue following that.
I, the last I saw, it was in committee in the state, and they were looking at bringing down the number of required permits within the Dora. Area, which would benefit us, but I don't think it had gone any further, so.
And for those watching, Adora is not a uh youth TV show, it is a. Uh downtown outdoor refreshment area in which you can uh meander with uh your favorite adult beverage. Outside on the public sidewalk.
In a in a.
In a defined area, yes, can't go to Ben's house.
Yeah, solid clarification on that, Jim, thanks for that, that's good.
Anybody else?
The only other question that I had, Chip. I had a question for you, Chip, and I just wanted to formally ask for the creation of a uh fireworks committee. Um I've been working for the last two years or so on trying to bring fireworks back in some capacity like they were before. Um and think that with the Legion wanting to take a step back. And the village looking at uh more of an active planning role. That a formalized committee would be beneficial from a reporting standpoint uh to keep everybody up to speed. And I think that the school district has one as well, um uh and I would ask if the formation of that committee is agreeable. Um I would ask for appointment to that committee, and I'll just continue the work under that umbrella that I've been doing for the last uh two years.
You need a motion?
Yeah, probably, and Ben, what's your thoughts in on maybe not doing a fireworks committee, but maybe a community events? Committee or something like that, if something else comes along that would fit under that purview, or do you just want to do it as fireworks alone?
I think that's, I think that's fine, if that's the way that the committee wants to move, and maybe it's just a a matter of the the naming of the committee. In my mind, this year is having a fireworks event like we tried to do last year, like we had in some capacity two years ago. Um over the Pulte space, but I think Chip has brought up also bringing on board a celebration of the city status. And then whatever else we wanted to do around that event as well, I don't see this as being centralized within council specifically. But being more of a community-led and community-involved committee with the council appointee. In some respect, because there's going to be, uh I would assume, as there has been in years past. Uh community money associated with it in some capacity, as long as it stays within the village uh limits as it did before, so. Um I'm fine with the name, that's fine, I would just want to continue to be on that committee and continue the work. And building on the foundation that we've made over the last couple of years.
We we do this, we bring it up in our meeting in two weeks. And we'll pass a resolution. And um we could all could gather some names of people that we think might be interested, and we can contact them and ask them if they'd like to be on this. And we can leave it open-ended, the number of people, it doesn't have to be limited. If we find we can get ten people, or if we can get five people, we'll just take what we get.
I like Jim's idea of having a community events instead of a.
Yeah, I I appreciate Ben's work, uh because it would fall into my lap or or our admin. Anything we can do to get that out of the admin and into your space, Ben, I will be more than happy to do, I appreciate it.
And Ben, you're my number one person to put on there, so.
I appreciate the goal. The goal is standardize the process and have it repeatable with a template as the years go on, and to make it. An easy execution, and you just have passionate people on there that want to see a success, a su- a successful event in some capacity. Uh and that's been my goal the last two years, it's just to have, just to have something, something the community can can rally around, so I I appreciate it.
Great, so we'll see, we'll see something. Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Was that Cheryl?
Yes.
Yes, plus.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those no, we're adjourned.
Thank you all.